To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
We'll ask the third to take the roll call at this time.
Chair Ames, here. Commissioner Carlson, here. Commissioner Hapala, here. Commissioner Jorgensen, here. Commissioner Lewis, here. Commissioner Perrow, here. Liaison Pilon, I'm not, Mayor, I'm not sure where to put you in the order.
Okay, the first thing we'll, we'll have, somebody make approve or amend tonight's meeting minute, July twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two, somebody like to make this motion?
I'll make an amendment or a change. Uh, we're not, we don't have June twenty-eighth minutes, so we would like to scratch that from the agenda tonight.
Okay, and you made the motion on the twenty-sixth?
That's, yes, yes, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with scratching of the minutes for June twenty-eighth.
Gotcha.
Okay, is that ready?
Yes, Commissioner Perrow made the motion. Somebody like to second this? I'll second it. Commissioner Hapala, second it. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll book, we'll vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, because we only have one item on the agenda tonight, we'll open the public hearing. And right now, the public hearing is open. And, uh, Turk will put the time down. At this time, we'll have the, uh, our planner present what she has.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Planning and zoning Commission has studied for almost a year, looking at, looking at commercial industrial architectural standards. Uh, we had a moratorium that was adopted last July thirteenth and which expired on July thirteenth of this year. So we are looking to adopt this, uh, a few changes regarding architectural standards. If you have any comments tonight, please sign up and you may speak at the podium. So just to go over the highlights, um, of our ordinance, we have had a architectural materials ordinance in place for many, many years since we became a city and even possibly before that. Uh, the building material requirements have not changed. So for commercial buildings, we're using grade A, B, or C materials. Grade A is what is glass, brick, or stone. Uh, grade B is, um, split-phase block, precast panels, stucco, and exterior insulation and finish systems. Grade C is integral color, smooth concrete block, scored or cast, scored concrete block or cast concrete panels or glass block. Grade C is also wood, natural or composite wood, um, provided that finishes are of proven durability for exterior use. And then grade D materials are steel or aluminum, which are only allowed in industrial zones. Um, and vinyl is only allowed in residential housing districts. So, um, commercial districts, sixty-five percent of the sides which face public streets have to be grade A materials and thirty-five percent on the remainder of the building. Or thirty-five percent on that side can be B or C. Uh, there's no metal allowed in commercial districts. In industrial districts, up to fifty percent metal can be allowed, provided it's coordinated into the architectural design. So we, we still would expect some higher quality materials, especially, um, the front office areas and the sides facing public streets. But those have not changed. Um, what we did change is we added some building color requirements for both commercial industrial districts. So the mass of the building, eighty percent, um, shall be earth tones, subtle colors, neutral or muted tones. The remaining twenty percent can be contrasting colors or color enhancements, including up to three accent colors, uh, which cannot include neon or reflective materials unless specifically allowed by city council. Excuse me. Uh, doors and trim, if they are the same color as the eighty percent, in other words, the neutral tones, they do not count as accent colors. If they are, um, in the twenty percent category, then the doors and window trim would count as, um, the brighter colors. Or, you know, if, if the business is trying to attain a theme or, um, meet certain color requirements of a, you know, a McDonald's or a franchise-type, uh, development. So eighty, twenty on color. And then, as far as architectural guidelines, we broke it down into commercial and industrial. Commercial uses, uh, primarily along Viking and a small part of Naline Boulevard here. And then over at the intersection of forty-seven and twenty-two, uh, post-frame buildings with steel or aluminum are prohibited. Uh, again, this only applies to new structures and additions more than fifty percent of the current building size. Uh, we would expect one visually significant entrance. Um, that can be emphasized with a higher roof, different roof lines, different colors, uh, glass vestibules. Uh, there's a lot of different architectural means to draw attention to the entrance. Uh, we would expect in commercial areas that the ground floor facades contain windows inviting entries, awnings, overhangs, uh, which are inviting to and consistent with pedestrian use. Um, coordination among multi-tenant buildings or separate sites would be expected to coordinate, um, landscaping, parking connections, um, trails, those kinds of things. Windows shall be generously used in commercial structures, especially for sides facing the public right-of-way. And we would expect a consistent use of materials on all elevations to, um, make it look like a coordinated design effort. And sometimes you might have the front of the building that faces a local street or a frontage road, but which backs up to, let's say, one of our main arterials. Um, even though, you know, you can put false windows on one side, which break up the monotony of a single material or color, um, but that could still be used as a, you know, back storage area or warehouse area, but that looks, um, inviting from, as you're driving down Viking Boulevard. Visual and physical links are required as part of the site planning, architecture, exterior spaces, pedestrian connections and landscaping. We established a height, height-to-width ratio. So let's say your building's twelve feet high, you can't go, it's one to three for commercial districts, so if it's twelve feet high, it can't go more than thirty-six feet long without a change in height, wall articulation, roof changes, windows, or color and material changes, so that we don't just have that solid span of a single material and color. Lastly, landscaping and screening shall buffer large spans of wall space, all public properties or adjacent residential uses. These are some examples of commercial buildings that appeal to the city with the differing roof heights. The articulation means that it's not just a flat front. It, there's some different dimensions and depths used. And, um, but they all have fairly neutral color with awnings as an accent or, um, windows for some limited colors in the signage. The industrial architectural guidelines also just apply to new structures and additions more than fifty percent. Uh, we're looking for character and style, materials and scale, which are compatible with adjacent uses. The height-to-width ratio for industrial is one to five. So we allow a little bit longer wall before you need to change in height, colors, windows, et cetera. Uh, facades shall provide architectural rhythm through roof line changes, texture and color. And office warehouse areas should be unified in design. So whatever's, you can't just have a front office area that's all brick and then the remainder is all metal. So we need to coordinate, uh, maybe there's a Wayne's Coat of brick around the warehouse area, you know, and then part of it's metal. Uh, but again, we want one visually significant entrance for the industrial use, which is typically a front office or, uh, customer entrance. And then any large spans of wall space, um, that face public streets need to incorporate extensive landscaping. Ideally, we would have windows and office areas facing the public streets with the warehouse behind. Um, if you're on a corner, sometimes it's hard to avoid a part of that warehouse facing, uh, the public street. But you can also do, um, you know, clear story windows or windows higher up that aren't a break-in hazard. They allow light into the warehouse area and they break up that wall space. And then landscaping underneath, it makes a nice-looking, nice-looking building. So, these are some examples of industrial uses. Again, fairly neutral colors with accents, um, incorporated changes in height, materials and colors which break up the long spans of building space, emphasize entrance, entrances, and varying materials. A few other changes we made, encouraging varied roof lines. So pretty much any roof lines. Um, we are going to require that the architectural plans indicate on them the percentages of materials, colors, uh, figured out by the architect. And, um, even flat roofs would be allowed, provided there's screening of building equipment and utilities. Um, that would be a requirement for all new properties. And then fifty percent of the parking has to be inside or rear yards, not all in the front. Um, we're trying to achieve a more uniform setback, um, along our major roads, so that we're not looking at a sea of parking. And many times, like I said, in a frontage drilled system, you've got sort of a back and a front entrance that can both be beneficial and architecturally pleasing. So we need that shared parking or parking that's divided up among the site and not just one big span. And then reciprocal parking access may be required, uh, in areas where we don't have a local frontage road established or it's not possible to establish in some of the older, smaller lots along, um, some of our intersections. This is an example of a parking configuration that, surrounded by a main road, you've got a portion of your parking in back and a portion that sort of creates a main street feel, um, kind of pull-in, pull-out type parking, angled parking. Lots of landscaping throughout the parking areas. You've got plazas, trail connections, uh, pedestrian connections between buildings. And you can see how the setbacks for the structures are consistent. And then you've got kind of like a main thoroughfare or a city center feel to these multi-tenant buildings. And this is just a very general sort of road plan or land use plan. Um, this isn't being adopted as part of the ordinance. We may refine and talk about this more later, but just to get an idea of how, you know, we've got Iguana Street, which will be continued across Viking Boulevard to create another through local street. And creating that big sort of circular drive throughout our commercial industrial areas. So, but primarily tonight, we're focusing on the ordinance, twenty-twenty-two dash oh-two. I have had two calls regarding, well, one call and one email. I got a call today from the owners of the Bootleggers Building. Uh, he just wanted to verify that it did in fact apply to just new development. And so he didn't have any comments other than that. And then Mr. Radamacher, that owns Bills, he sent an email saying he was unable to attend tonight's meeting. Please accept my comments regarding the proposed. Uh, regarding commercial and architectural standards, he had a comment on the landscape and screening. Shall be utilized to buffer large spans of wall space adjacent to public rights-of-way. He's commenting that Bills, he's surrounded by driveways and the rear driveway nearly abuts the property line with no room for landscape buffer. Um, is there a minimum distance from where the landscape buffer or screening must be placed? So again, we would not apply this ordinance to his existing building, um, especially given the limited space. Uh, but if he were to ever acquire any additional land or add-on, then we would look at trying to create the necessary screen or landscaping.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mayor.
Uh, so Liz, to, to his point, you know, when, when the buildings went in, the bank, the restaurants and all those went in, uh, obviously we didn't have the standards that we're talking about now.
Right.
And we, we didn't take into account, or the township didn't take into account, um, businesses that intended to have people stay for an extended period of time. It was always kind of thought of, you come in to the bank, you do your business, you leave. We didn't anticipate people staying an hour to three hours in that place. So the businesses we have on, on Viking right now, didn't take that into consideration, so we didn't really allot parking. As you remember, we had that in the corner building that was not enough parking for the businesses there. So in this case, where Bills had a small piece of land where they bought from a previous store and it was existing, understanding it wouldn't affect Bills, but how do we do this going forward to make sure people have enough property front and back to, to meet our ordinances? Because this was already designed in by the township and it was just too narrow from the get-go.
Right.
We just need to make sure that future lot sizes take that into consideration, so then you can put in buffering and, and some of these things that are able to be accomplished.
Yeah, agreed. I mean, a lot of our lots, even some of the industrial ones are quite small. Um, but that's a good, uh, case in point for the need for conceptual, um, planning, not only subdivision planning, but conceptual property layouts. And it is something that we can be a hundred percent comfortable asking developers to provide that. Um, you know, we can measure the sites that we think are too small and, you know, figure out, well, how much more depth do we want or need? Um, and when you're working with, you know, forty-acre parcels or whatever, um, that should be doable to figure that out. I mean, the other thing you can do with, there are a few other small lots that might be redeveloped someday, but you work backwards, you know? You have to have screening, so maybe your building has to be smaller. You have less parking. You have to, you know, screen, you have to meet all the requirements, so you can't necessarily...
So, so in that, should we have an action item that, that we develop those standards to say, building a certain size, if you're going to have parking front and back, if you're going to have the buffer from the appropriate properties, what would be the minimum? So if somebody is coming in with a concept, they would know what a maximum building or minimum lot size, whichever.
Well, see, it depends on the use, though, because, you know, the land uses require different parking standards, but we could, we could provide examples, you know?
Yeah, I'm thinking, we, we know, like with restaurants or places where people are going to be a longer period of time.
Right.
We would have parking standards and say, you have to have this much parking and therefore your parking area would be percentage of your interior. We have to have some formula in it.
Oh, I see.
That it gives people the opportunity to say, I have a small business that does this type of thing, in and out, customers, employees can park here, customers there. And what would be the percentage of parking to building size to sit back? Otherwise, you have to, you'd kind of have to do it on an individual basis and you don't really have a rule of thumb to go by. At least if we started out with something that...
Yeah, we could provide some general examples, but, you know, it does differ whether you're on one street or two streets, because then your setbacks are affected. You know, if it's a single use on a property or a multi-use building. So, but generally, you know, it's one space for every two-hundred square feet of office or, um, retail and one space for every thousand square feet of warehouse or storage area.
So in a case, in a case like we have on twenty-two right now, what would be the buffer, knowing that there were some inconsistencies under the, you know, the town board, that there was a minimum buffer between properties and adjacent properties, with the idea that there would be trees and bushes to be put in those separately?
Well, we haven't gotten that far either in kind of reviewing our buffering and screening section, so that's something that we could keep working on. Um, but right now, yeah, on the back of a commercial or industrial use, it's a hundred-foot buffer to a residential district. Um, and that can be just open space, trees, pounding, wetlands. But that's a significant, you know, distance. Um, I don't know that we need a hundred feet, but I mean, that's something to talk about, depending on what the landscaping requirements are. If there's a berm, how many rows of trees? Typically, the best screening are, you know, staggered rows, varying, um, species. Berms are nice, provided they're irrigated, they dry out way back.
So at this point, you're saying that's, that's an action item?
That is, that's, that's on the list of things to do yet, just to look at that, yep.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Perrow.
Um, so circling back on what you guys were just speaking of, I guess my, my question is, is for the, for the community as a whole, would, if we could go back and change something, would we require to have screening between Bills and the public land? Because I don't think, as a personal opinion, looking at it going, there needs to be buffering based on the ordinances that we're trying to, you know, change and make, you know, for the future. I don't know that looking at what we have currently is a nuisance, not having screening between a retail property like, like a gas station and a public field. So I don't know that we're missing something there. And his notes, what he brought, what Radamacher brought in, I believe, needs to be addressed more through the landscaping design stuff, not so much architectural stuff, because this, it, it's more specific to the landscaping design versus the architectural standards, because architectural standards should just reverse, revert back to landscaping section.
Mm-hmm.
Um, then the second part of what he's noted here, I might as well just cover it real quick, he's got a very good point, that the invisible part of electronic surveillance is kind of, kind of backwards, it needs to be visible, so, um, I'm not sure, you know, what invisible is meant to be on that, so...
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Well, if you think about, you know, the first surveillance cameras that came out, just like, you know, the ginormous TVs we used to have that were this deep, right? You know, everything's kind of gotten smaller, so it's really not that obtrusive, um, surveillance equipment now, you know, the cameras are so small. But, um, obviously, it's necessary for almost all commercial industrial uses and especially a gas station. So, um, he says microphones at fuel islands are a requirement, must be placed close to the dispenser, hiding them seems to be contrary. Again, those are all things we can talk about. Many times, commercial industrial uses have a conditional use permit that goes along with their request to build a new, um, facility, especially a gas station. But those are all things we work out at the time of design and development. Um, again, this is not going to be us asking Mr. Radamacher to retrofit his existing facility, so...
And that's not what I was actually asking. I was just talking as, as a committee here. Like, if we had the opportunity, would we want, would we demand trees between the park and all these businesses along there? I don't know that necessarily it, it needs to have that. And I think sometimes we get a little excessive on our screening ideas. Um, so just something to think about for the future. I know we talk about a minimum setback for, he was asking the minimum setback for lot lines and stuff, but I guess it's a case-by-case basis, but we got to figure out some standards. Do we have a landscaping section?
We do, that's what, yeah. You know, I think it doesn't necessarily mean it has to be a screen, but you're definitely going to want landscaping. I mean, we don't, it depends on kind of the feel of the park, too. Some parks are more like urban, right, with a, maybe a courtyard. Some parks, right now, we're just, you know, looking at ball fields. But we definitely want pedestrian connection. Um, you know, how does it feel when you're in the park looking at the back of a You know, how does it feel when you're in the park, looking at the back of a building, you know, and there's a truck unloading? Well, maybe it's not offensive, so it's, yeah, it's up to the city to determine. But, I think, yeah, that would definitely be part of a future conversation. Agreed?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mayor?
And that was my point, you know, that it's not part of the architectural. Ms. Radmacher brings it up here. I just wanted to make sure it's addressed, because when Bill's was built, actually was built is now the country store before that, and followed the general store that was on Main Street here in five. There were trees. And when Bill's decided to take down all the trees, he actually paid for trees to go up between his property and parkland. So, we had trees on the parkland, we had trees on Bill's property that were taken down to bring in the diesel island and clean out the housing on the corner which had all the trees. So, actually, Ms. Radmacher paid for the evergreens in the corner of the park, and the city had already put up trees between the bank and the other portion of Bill's. So, because the town board did allow such tight setbacks, they put the trees on the park side. But, I think it's to the point, if you are at the park or the pavilion, you probably don't wanna be watching trucks unload or industrial uses if you can make it look like more like a park side. But, those would be things that, because when the township started developing those lots, they were very shallow and you couldn't get much of a building on there, and the allotted parking and loading and unloading zones without being right up against the property lines. So, those are things in the landscaping portion, certainly, that can be considered. I think to the second part there, those of us that are old enough remember what the cones and speakers looked like on the gas stations before. They were much larger and much more obtrusive. And I think the key there is unobtrusive as possible, maybe invisible is strong, but unobtrusive. If you take a look at the gas pumps now, the microphones and the speakers are integral to the equipment. You might have a hard time finding where to speak or where the attendant in the building is speaking to you. And I think the, again, on the surveillance equipment, it is much more discreet. The city's put up a number of cameras, and you'd probably be hard-pressed to find most of them. So, the idea is discreet, but people know they're there because they wave to us with one of their fingers when they drop things off illegally, so we know they know they're there. It serves its purpose, but it's not obtrusive. And I think that's one of the key things there, that the blending, but serving its purpose is part of that.
I have one concern. You know, between these two bars over here, we had a problem at one time, that they put barriers up in between, because they had disagreement where the property lines was and stuff. So, there's no way to distinct the difference between those lots. Do we need something there?
We have something in our ordinance regarding shared parking. Yeah, and we exercised that when Bootleggers was upgraded. So, there is a CUP for shared parking.
Okay. Mr. Chair?
Yes?
And in that case, there was a requirement when those properties were divided, that there was a five-foot setback between parking for both, which would allow for trees and green space, and it just didn't happen. And so, once the parking lots were paved, nobody was going back and saying, please rip up the parking lot. Because it also, again, wasn't considered for long-term parking, or trailer parking, or truck parking. And so, it made more sense to not divide the property line with the trees and the curbing like it was originally required, because there was no place for truck parking, so... And shared parking allowed for trucks and trailers to also utilize multiple spaces, which wouldn't have been there because of the original design wasn't set up for restaurants and the type of commercial and typical vehicles we have now. That was an oversight on part of the town board, and we've just gotten redfired again. That type of parking wouldn't be allowed again.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Pearl?
Just one thing, I'm just gonna drop in there for everyone to hear in regards to this screening and landscaping. When it comes to hours of operations for commercial, industrial, they have their own hours of operation. And their trucks, unloading, loading, whatever, are gonna be during the week, not on weekends when public spaces are being used at a park. Most people are not at a park or a ballfield, you know, in the middle of the day, you know? So, I don't know that the visible unloading and loading of a truck randomly throughout the week, not typically on weekends, but is gonna be that much of a nuisance. But, something to think about, I guess.
Mr. Chair? Maybe you could ask for a public comment one more time? And then you could get into the specifics of the...
Before we do that, though, I'm gonna ask the clerk, the verifier, the mailings that were sent out, if they were sent out.
They have been, yes.
They have been, okay? Then, is there anybody else here on the commission that would like to make some comments?
I've got a comment on that commercial architectural standards where it says, "Post-frames constructed with steel or aluminum siding shall be prohibited." Okay, does that include all plastic, too?
It's not accepted. Vinyl's not accepted on commercial and industrial, based on our...
But, why shouldn't that have been all in one spot instead of here and there? It's kinda hip-happy.
I think you're just pulling out the post-frame building part of that.
But, we kinda knew around that.
But, you can't put vinyl on a post-frame building. There's not enough rigidity in the vinyl. It needs, it needs closer...
We know that, but why should you have one of them here and one in another spot? That's kinda like a, that's not good.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Well, so, it's commercial versus industrial. So, the commercial is along our thoroughfares. You know, we're trying to get that city center type of a feel, which would necessitate the higher-quality buildings. When you've got a large warehouse, which is generally more square footage, that's where we're giving in and allowing more variety in building materials and a lesser percentage of the higher-quality materials. So, that's why it was divided up into two sections.
But, somebody might read that and say, hey, we can't use steel or aluminum, so we can use vinyl. That's what'll happen.
Well, no, we have the material section that specifies, a couple pages before that. Yeah, the grade A, B, or C, for commercial...
Page four.
Two and...
Well, the building materials are two and, page two and three, yes. But, it references what's allowed.
What's allowed, yep.
Per zone.
So, that didn't change, Commissioner Jorgensen. That's the same since we became a city.
More than likely, that could have been covered all with one sentence for all of them. Because any of that reform stuff is not gonna be too solid, because you go by a lot of houses, and you can see them right now. If you see the double four and the difference between that and Dutch slap, and you'll see the swags and the siding on houses.
Oh, with the vinyl, you mean?
Oh, you bet.
Yeah.
But, a lot of people don't recognize that, but I do. I've had a lot to do with making the siding of that, and so I know quite a bit about what goes and what don't go on it. But, a lot of it shouldn't even be where there's a lot of heat and there's not enough nailers and some of these new rafters and stuff that we use on the houses. And there's nothing in there for them to nail to. You can see them, the swags, especially toward the bottom of them. It looks pretty tacky.
So, Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Were you finished? I'm sorry.
Huh?
Were you finished speaking?
Yeah, it ain't gonna go nowhere, so, anyway, so... That's the way it should be, though. It could have all been wrapped up in one, because basically, you can't use any of those kinds of siding with any kind of luck on a commercial building, because a lot of them don't have enough, it's just not enough there to work with.
Right.
And even the new, the newer houses, quite a few of them, and I've built a couple of houses like that already, and you can't find nothing in there to nail the darn thing to where it's supposed to be, because you'll end up at one that's probably three, four feet longer than it's supposed to be, and you're not supposed to be building stuff like that, that's cruddy work. And something shouldn't be, you know, and the inspector misses it. They don't take time to look at it. But, I can drive down the road on a hot day, and I can see just exactly where they've got their nailers and where they don't have them.
Well, Mr. Chair, there's no vinyl for the commercial-industrial zones. Again, the whole intent behind the higher-quality materials in commercial zones is those of the districts where you've got, you know, customers and the masses of people coming and going, and more pedestrians. And industrial are typically more employee-based operations. Any other thoughts?
Any other questions? Not, we'll open it up to the public. Anybody wanna make a comment, stick up their mic and give your name and address?
Melissa Coler, it's on that paper, 19508, down the door. So, I see there's talk about... There's talk about paths and trails. Curious to see, curious to know where those, where you plan to put those. And then also, as far as I know, nothing like this has been approved, this plan. I haven't seen that, but that doesn't really mean anything. So, I think you're getting ahead of yourselves by making all of these ordinances. I think your time is better spent figuring out exactly what you're gonna do and where you're gonna make things before you try to regulate them. And as far as trying to regulate the powers, I'd like to know what other city has ordinances like that. Working with somebody to plan to build a commercial building in Big Lake, and as far as I know, they don't have any regulations like that and ordinances like that. So, I'm just curious to know what city does. I think that's all I have to know.
You wanna add yours, sir?
Sure, Mr. Chair. Well, regarding the planning process, the way it works, see, is we have to establish our zoning districts, and then we have a whole list of permitted uses. So, we don't know who's gonna come in, right? We don't know if it's a gas station, you know, a daycare, a grocery store. And they're also different, so we really have to kind of evaluate site to site. We do have a generalized park and trail plan, but they're typically focused on the, you know, street systems or connection between subdivisions. But, definitely in a downtown area, we would look for your typical sidewalks or some sort of trail connections. You know, at the present time, we don't have a lot of new uses, so, you're right. I mean, it's a process. I mean, some of these things might not come to fruition for 20 or 30 years, I mean, until our population goes up to support the commercial development. But, planning takes a lot of years, and you have to have it on paper to be able to legally show that to developers that walk in your door. And so, we have to be prepared, but still, at the same time, somewhat flexible. So, I, again, I...
But, won't that, can I speak? I'm sorry.
Oh, sure.
So, won't that make people not wanna come in here and build? If you're making it hard for them to do so, and they don't even know what your changes will be? I guess if I was going to, you know, wanna, you know, like, avoid Ellen. Ooh, I do have one more thing, can I see, can I hear that? So, I found this odd, too. So, on the front, you have a picture of a barn farm. And then all these pictures that you have, the two that just doesn't jive to me, you know? I mean, what field are we going for? Are we going for the farm? Or are we going for a city look?
The picture, that barn, that's just our city logo that we put on all of our, all of our information we have.
Yeah, it's on the website as well.
Yeah.
I don't know, it threw me off.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I would just state that, you know, in general, yeah, it's up to the city, and the city has to have certain goals. It's for sure partly based on our comprehensive plan. And without establishing the goals and regulations, you know, that are applied uniformly to anyone that walks in the door, you know, then we gotta have that as our tool in our back pocket, because, you know, if we're just letting metal buildings go up along, you know, our main drag, I don't think that that's necessarily, you know, for the best either. So, it's, like I said, we spent a lot of time on it, and all the commissioners had inputs. And it'll be going to council after tonight for discussion and adoption. I mean, ordinances are always kind of a work in progress. And, you know, not that it can't be changed, but we have to start out with some ground rules and, you know, high standards. You gotta have some standards that are at least mid to high if you want to bring any value and any, you know, aesthetics to your city.
Just like, I'm in real estate, so many of the cities and towns do have, they have CD1. They want the appearance, and there's guidelines, and there's standards. Anything on Highway 65, you can't build a metal building like that.
Would you come up to the mic, please, and give your name and address?
Julie Lender, I was just commenting, too. Obviously, most cities have standards when it comes to CD1, because you don't want the appearance of whole buildings or whatever on your front edge that you're being dragged. So, I think it enhances the town to have some kind of conditions or at least, you know, some guidelines of what you have on your CD1. Industrial, that's kind of a whole different ballgame. If CD1, obviously, you want it to appear in CD1, bringing people, and you have a lot of traffic driving past it, so you want it to look conforming. So, I think it's kind of a good plan to... I think it's kind of a good plan to start with. I mean, obviously, nobody's doing anything on a self-site, making quite yet as far as the projection, but having some kind of guidelines, I think, would be appealing to business owners that want to do CD1 versus industrial. I was just making reference to that. I, in real estate, I find that CD1s, you want to have a, a higher standard in your, so, commercial.
Julie, will you give your address, please?
It's 8752 Viking.
Okay. She made a good point. This is just a guideline for us and this can always be changed. We see down the road, there's something that's not being addressed. And we gotta have something to start out with. And you might think it's pretty tough to start out with, but if we find that there's something in there that needs to be changed later on down the way, down, down the road, we can change it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um-
Commissioner.
So, we adopted, like, not adopted, but Liz had brought together a bunch of information from surrounding areas to make up all of these pages of information. And there was a lot of things that we have changed over the course of the past few months. A lot of things you guys probably have no clue about. Like, we went from exterior colors on the commercial and industrial, removed, removed it from ninety percent to eighty percent as a primary stuff. There's a lot of changes that did take place throughout this. And I know everyone here doesn't probably know all of that stuff. So, it, there is a lot of changes that we've, you know, went through. So, if there is something that you guys noticed, we would love to hear a specific. And the pedestrian stuff is kind of needed. I don't know. Kind of feel like it's needed for commercial when we're doing Starbucks and restaurants and grocery stores. They, they kind of just connect themselves nicely sometimes when you park in the middle of a parking lot. So, it's, you kind of get it everywhere you go. So, I'm not really sure how else to do it other than connect the frontages of the buildings together. So, I hope that covers a lot of that.
I actually do have another question. Working with different cities and doing, dealing with development of commercial, my understanding was, as MINDOC had projected, obviously, I recall that the market crash in 2008 killed that, but eventually was going to do the east and west Viking Boulevard or north of the next throwaway from 35W to 169. Is this construction that's going on down there on Route Lakes of 33, does that have anything to do with any type of projection of straight throwaway with the truckers and stuff going?
Thanks, Commissioner.
It does not. Yeah, that's simply the Sherman County upgraded the road from our border into the roundabout.
Okay.
But there, there, there is no plan for Noka County to turn over Viking Boulevard to the state at this point. There's, there's some discussion that they would like to exchange parts of 47 for parts of 22, but the county's not interested in that until 47 is corrected and fixed to their standards. So, at this point, the only additions we'll see is the county 22 goes up to St. John's and then goes south in Baugh. They intended this year to turn that into the same type of roadway you have out here, concrete with the eight-foot shoulders.
Yep.
That's going to be all the way down in Baugh. But because of the construction in Noka and in Elk River and the people that are bypassing those construction zones, they did a temporary overlay and that construction will be in the 25, 26 season. And they're going to actually widen that. They have no intention at this point to turn it over to the state.
That's Baugh Street, sort of like shelters and stuff. How far is that going out to the corner or to the freeway?
Yeah.
Really?
But that won't be until the 25, 26 construction.
Okay. So, is, are they doing that then? Or what you're saying is on the other side of St. John's there, is that they're widening that? Does that sound like exchanging the telephone poles and they just put those in?
Yeah, they're moving the telephone poles out. We haven't got the full scope of what they're doing, but they're going to rebuild that road between the roundabout and our border.
Interesting.
They did, they did not have the proper ditching there.
Yeah, it is a little tight in some of those areas, so.
And you have to go on and go off.
No, I know that not too well, but before we did ours here, I had a couple airbag people on microcaster. That was a pre-tach, a bad one. It would have been nice that I could have voted. It would have been a little more chowder, but.
Are there, are there comments made from the public? Again, I'll come back to the planning and zoning. Any more comments from planning and zoning? We'll go back to public again and give you a second chance if there's anything you want to bring up this time, this time to do it. Otherwise, we'll close the public hearing. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Now, we're, we'll have the decision that we make recommend to the council. Are there age changes here that Liz, that we're making, going to make at this time to what we have here already before us?
I had a couple comments and wanted to bring one thing to your attention. Let's see. So, this incorporates comments from the last meeting. I hope that's acceptable. And then... Uh... Sorry, trying to find it here. So, on page eight, number eight, where we talk about the one to three height to width ratio for commercial uses. And then in the following section, we, at the end of there, it says, you know, to break up a large stance of building, you can use wall articulation, projections, offsets, windows, ornamentation. I think it would be a good ideal to add color and material changes as part of that because that can also break up that mass of wall space. And then I would add the same thing to the industrial section on the next page. And then the only other thing on page 10, you'll note I added a small section on submittal requirements, which requires that when the building elevations are submitted for review and approval, that they clearly identify the exterior material types and colors to include the percentage of primary and accent colors and a percentage of materials on all building facades and requesting a colored rendering be required for the front facade and all their sides that face public streets. It gives you a better idea of how it's going to look, I think. And then number six on that page, which was the last architectural standard for industrial, large stands of solid wall space may not face public streets without incorporation of extensive landscaping. Does that make sense?
So, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So, on number six, you wanted to add landscaping to that?
Yeah, without the incorporation of extensive landscaping. If you're not going to have, you know, windows or different, or for some reason you can't, then...
Do we, do we have to use the word extensive?
Well, no, we don't have to, I guess. I guess-
Because that's then covered in the landscaping section a little more detailed, right?
I was going to say, a lot of times it'll refer to that section. So, maybe we do that and then when we look at the section, then we can deal with it. Does that sound okay?
That sounds a little more.
Repeat that again.
So, it's just, instead of just making a blanket statement like extensive landscaping shall be landscaped according to section whatever, and then we would look at that section later. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Is there anything else that the commission thinks we should look at?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Apple.
Yeah, I'd agree with the Mr. Ottermacher's comment on section 43 partially.
What page are you on?
Page eleven.
Okay.
I think we should, from 43, we should strike invisible and from the phrase, so it just says electronic surveillance program and alarm hardware shall be unobtrusive as possible.
Is that just removing invisible and?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I couldn't quite hear you.
I have one other suggestion on that page. At the bottom, where it's talking about expansions. Number two states that additions less than fifty percent can use the same materials on the current building, but we need to state that additions fifty percent or greater shall incorporate all standards contained in the section or something like that. The new, you know, the new standards.
Isn't that what number one is supposed to cover?
Well, that's, that is referencing non-conforming uses.
It says not increasing size.
Well, right. So, if you are increasing size, fifty percent or greater of your existing building size, that's what triggers compliance with some of these things. Not that you have to, you know, change the whole facade or anything, but what you're adding on should be at least, you know, you need to at least take into consideration what we've just added. There's got to be a threshold for what it, you know, what it triggers. Or if you only want it to apply to new construction, you could do it that way, too. But...
I don't know too many places right now that exist that can expand too much more without-
Agreed. We're tight on space and a lot of them.
Yeah, honestly, I, on it, between what we have here, I don't believe there's much room for expansion without property.
Probably just A and B, you know, some of the newer things up on 47, but yeah, only on the larger lots.
Mr. Chair?
Disagree regarding new construction, these new or, this one.
Well, that's, that's the question.
Correct. But like, somebody puts up a new building and then ten years wants to expand, so something that hasn't been built yet, you may have a situation where they're going to expand, not necessarily grandfathered in, I guess, is what I'm questioning how this is, what this is referencing.
No, I'm talking more about buildings that exist now.
Okay.
That may not meet these requirements, right?
Sure.
So, they're legally non-conforming because they were approved by the city at a prior date. So, we, you know, we basically authorized them with either a city council approval or a building permit. So, those are legally, but-
But anything new has to conform to the standards, but then those new buildings, reading this, if they do an addition, they still need to conform with-
Right.
-the new standards?
Yeah, yes. They, yeah, anything that adds on fifty percent or greater. I mean, do you want to have it only apply to new construction? Or, you know, or I would say it's, it's additions greater than fifty percent that would trigger it, or greater than sixty percent, or gr, you know, but fifty percent is what you commonly see in this kind of a situation. Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Burr.
So, kind of going back to an addition of fifty percent or more, kind of the only thing left is to go up with some of these places. So, they're going to have to do something to blend it and make it right. So, I believe that this is, I don't, I don't know that we have to, I don't think that we have to say anything about the fifty percent or greater because it's just going to, it's going to take care of itself.
Mr. Chair?
Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, just to clarify, in, in the commercial areas, we have some legally non-conforming residential's or mixed use that are grandfathered in. And if they're, you know, typically damaged or expanded beyond the fifty percent, they have to comply with the, the standards for the zone they're in. So, if you have a, in a case like this where currently the structures we have may not have the ability or the room to expand more than fifty percent, we're really adopting these ordinances as we go forward. So, there'll be new developments. Some buildings, as Planner Stockman mentioned, could expand more than fifty percent. And I think the idea here is, is if they do, you would want them to abide by these standards on that increase that's more than fifty percent of their commercial area. And, and while it may not affect those that have maxed out their land use right now, we're writing its ordinance for years to come as well. And we don't know which other buildings are going to be in our commercial park here on 47, commercial and industrial. So, I think it's, the idea there is maybe you, you're growing, you build a building right now and you want to add on to it. If it's an existing building, you want to incorporate these standards, not go back to the ones that, when they built twenty years ago. I think that's the intention.
Mm-hmm, yes. So, keep in mind, I mean, the residences that we have in our commercial zone, those are basically interim uses. So, we treat those like a residential zoning district until such time as the residential use ceases and the commercial use takes over. You could convert a house to a commercial use and it can never go back to residential. But in that case, then they would have to comply with this. But until that time, if, let's say a residence is damaged by a tornado, tornado or something, they can rebuild exactly how they were with the footprint, even though they are non-conforming.
You could say, you said they never go back. Why did this house over here go back?
Where, across the way?
Yes.
Yes, because we allowed that one. We changed, he paid to have the ordinance changed to accommodate a family member. So, that was a whole, it's a little different. It's very limiting. So, you can't, and you can't go back and forth again, so.
And once it becomes commercial, Mr. Chair, and it's damaged beyond fifty percent, it has to be then brought back to these standards. You know, you're saying if it's residential and, and we didn't make provision for those people that want to continue to live in the residential, they could rebuild on that same footprint.
Yes.
But if they had converted to commercial, it can't go back to residential anymore. And if it's damaged, at that point, it has to be built to these new standards.
Right.
Are there any other changes we should be looking at? If not, should I ask that you repeat the ones we made?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner.
Will we just, are you going to add to this expansion then?
I'm going to create a number four.
Okay.
And put in. So, we'll have a section additions less than fifty percent and one additions greater than fifty percent. And I'll specify.
So, additions greater than fifty percent are going to be, need to be brought to- So additions greater than 50% are going to be, need to be brought to our code then? Is that what I'm...
Yeah, shall comply with the provisions of section five, which is all the building and architectural.
Okay.
Unless they have an ordinance, we have an ordinance change for them, like we did over here.
Well, that's why if we refer to the section and we change the section, then, then the new stuff applies as well.
Could we have you read those back to the changes we're recommending here?
Do you want me to, Frank, or do you think you got them all?
Why don't you try? I think I got them.
Okay. All right, let's see. So incorporating the changes that were, additions and subtractions that were in the document highlighted in red or blue, in addition to tonight's comments. Page eight, item eight, adding color and material changes. That would break up the mass of the dominant building mass. So that would be added to number eight on page eight, as well as number two on page And then number six on page 10, we are adding, large stands of solid wall space may not face public streets without being, incorporating landscaping addressed in section whatever, I don't know that landscaping, in buffering screening section in our ordinance. And then, page 11, item four, three, we're removing invisible and. Item N, we are adding a number four that addresses additions 50% or greater shall comply with section five material, color, and architectural standards. And I believe that's it.
Would somebody like to make the motion that we send this to the city council with these changes that we just described?
I'll make the motion to approve them as described.
Commissioner Hepala made the motion. Would somebody like to make a second?
Hold second.
Mr. Carlson made the second. Any further discussion? Seeing one, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And this will be going to the city council then.
I was just counting. Six, we're short one tonight, yeah. So August 11th would be the city council meeting. Thank you for coming.
You want to cover anything about the upcoming means, future means?
Just to say that the top final plat up on Highway 47 is moving forward. The preliminary plat for the second addition was approved at the July city council meeting. I believe Mr. Shermer is still moving forward with a five-lot plat on Twin Parkway. I know the wetland delineation's been done, but I haven't heard a lot else about that. I just received an application for some changes to the cell tower on Verdi Valley Road. That would be an amended CUP. But the application was incomplete, so I have to send the letter. Didn't get the appropriate fees or the required plans. So that is probably not until then your September meeting, unless they act really quickly. But I'm leaving out of town tomorrow, so it's probably delayed another month.
Well, I haven't called you tonight.
I'll be doing time sheets.
Well, thank you, everybody. You all worked hard on this ordinance.
Okay. Now, yes, Mayor.
Just, Mr. Mayor, or Mr. Chair, to announce that the city council has appointed a new city administrator. So I have, previously we had Kirk Treasure. We are now going forward with our first ever city administrator, Mr. Scott Laner has been appointed. He will start with the city August 1st, next Monday. So he'll be our full-time administrator. So we thank Mr. Boils for his excellent service these past many months and...
Except for the minutes, man.
And that he will be helping in transition as long as the council deems necessary. But Scott will be full-time on Mondays. Feel free to stop by the office and say hi, or he will be at this meeting in August.
So we'd like to entertain a motion for adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Hepala made a motion. Somebody second it?
Whoops.
I'll second it.
All right.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
We're adjourned. Thank you.
You guys are a little scary.
It takes a while to get your feet wet.
Yeah.
You're supposed to use it... One time, you get your feet wet. You get really comfortable.
Right.